Plan showing the redesign of the parking area as well as the stormwater.
Right.
So now, have you had any subsequent discussions with them on that?
I have. I don't know if you want to take that up now or wait until we actually get to-
No, we can do that, but I was just curious. But you did?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. With that, I'd have a motion for the approval of the minutes.
I approve the minutes of March 16.
You want to move?
Yes, actually, there's a typo in the date.
Strong typo.
Right.
March 2nd, right?
March 2nd.
No, 16th.
I move to approve the minutes of March 2, 2016.
March 16th, as written, as amended. It was my typo.
Oh, okay.
March 6, right?
March 16th.
16th.
Okay.
Says March 2nd.
With Pete's amendment.
With Pete's amendment on the stop sign instead of that. Okay. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay. Any further comment about these? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good. Thank you very much. So we have an appearance of two, I think. One A and R?
Two A and Rs.
Maybe it's two. Christopher Bouton, Scott Signore. Is that correct? Signore?
That's correct.
Signore. And I think those are the two individuals. So Mark, are you representing these folks?
I represent the two.
Okay. Could we maybe have- the board has not seen any of this yet, so to the extent that you can enlighten us, would be very appreciated.
Sure.
We actually think we had a reversal so that-
Would you like Chris to go first?
Chris can go first.
Hi.
Nice to meet you. I'm Charles Bryan. Lance Sawyer on the project.
Would it be helpful if I brought it along?
I'll help, sir.
Sure.
I think that the main purpose was Chris was going to be buying the existing lot 45. This is Chris Bouton's property, number 47. He was going to be buying 45, and they wanted to maintain this existing triangle, the owner of 45, which is also the owner of 43. They wanted to keep this existing triangle here, so we included this piece to what was existing 45 to maintain the 125 feet of frontage and the conformity of that lot. And then, in the process of that, we realized that the garage was not- did not have the 10-foot offset, so we did a smaller little land swap with number 49, which is Lot D1 and even-
Is 45, is that the house that's on the market now?
Uh, no, that's-
Which one is that?
Uh, this one is.
49?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
That's Judy's house.
All right, okay.
Yep.
Little's Lane is down here. This is a Patrickin house.
Right, 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 right.
These two have been here forever. That one is relatively new.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, I have a pretty cool photo of this from 1922. A lady came by after, right after we bought, and had aerial photos of the house from 1922, which is kind of cool. So, but yeah, the Farias want to sell Lot C, but they wanted to keep this portion. But we want to retain the buildability of the plot, so we're taking a portion of our existing land, adding it to Lot C in order to retain the 125-foot of frontage.
There's nothing on this lot now.
There's nothing there, and we don't plan to put anything there.
Yes.
This is really to retain the character of the area, which we love.
There's been some odd things happen subdivision-wise up and down.
Behind Ross Lane and stuff.
Oh, gotcha.
Further up, further up, but-
Yeah, from our vantage point, we sit here and look back this way, and so for us, retaining the open character of this land is in our interest. Yeah, and this was a garage. It was 9.6 foot offset. And so we needed to get into conformity, and so Judy was kind enough to do a land swap with us. So she's land swapping, I think it's literally 28 square foot of land in a seven-inch by 20-foot strip or something like that, and that's what we needed for conformity for the garage. And then we're swapping with her an equivalent strip right here. They're so small that you can't even really see them, but they are, in fact, little jogs out and then over and then back in in order to retain the conformity. Mathematics on that floor. Yep, yep. So that's the- it's basically two deals, both of which are intended to enable us to purchase what will effectively be a buildable lot at the end of the transactions.
I just don't know. What does this have to do with Mr. Signore's request?
Really, really, nothing.
Nothing?
They're in fact-
It's coincidental?
Well, they're two separate transactions, both occurring between the Farias and other parties. So our deal is a deal between the Farias and us, my wife and I, and Scott's is a deal between Scott and the Farias. Really, the only thing that is related between the two deals is that there's currently an easement through this land that will be going away. So I'll be losing an easement from Scott's land. Correct me if I'm wrong there, guys. Yep. That's really the only thing that's related between these two deals. Other than that, it's just Farias selling two different plots of land, two different parties.
Okay.
That's it.
Any questions from board members?
Assuming that adds up properly, they've got the frontage. They certainly have the area.
Right.
They're not creating a lack of frontage for somebody, are they? That's not a property line. That's a tie, right?
Yeah.
So you've got all the frontage in the world here.
Yep, this is all theirs.
This has- that has just barely enough from the looks.
Yeah, it's right on-
125 and some change. So that's fairly tight, but-
In fact, this line jogs out just a little bit, flares out just a little bit here, so that we can retain the total 250 that we need.
For what?
125 here and 125 here.
125.
Yep. So we did that intentionally, that flare out there.
That's to get the two 125s. And you say jogged out. That didn't jog out into the states right away, did it?
No, no, no.
No, no, no.
He just means the line was not a straight line. It's just an angle point.
The angle point there to get it. Yeah, I see.
Exactly.
Because they had all the furniture in the world.
Exactly. Yep.
Okay, I got you.
All right.
Very good summary, John.
Can we approve this without looking at the other one? Do we need to look at the other one first?
They're two independent things, but there is that Faria connection.
So can I have a motion on this from someone?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any further comment on it?
Just one question. Martha, you've looked this over, right?
Um, I've looked- Yes, I've looked them. We've had a number of conversations, and I've looked them over. I think all the numbers add up. All we need is a check for $200.
That we can do. That we can do, yes.
Okay, then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And we need-
So that's- which is the- this is the Faria property here, right?
Yeah, should they own this? Yes, yes.
What's the number of the property at the corner? One that's the old, the star. Earlier on, okay. And so which is the next one, then? Which is this one? This is that. And that's 4 Ross Lane? That's that.
So can I make my payment?
Aye.
So we can go get beer? I have cash. Does that work? Thank you very much.
So what you'll do is take the sign to Mylar and get that recorded at the registry.
Yes.
And then we'll get- and the deed when you make the transaction, so.
Absolutely. Would you like for us to stay for the second decision?
It's up to you. I don't think you need to, but you'll want to take them on.
No, you're good.
Yeah.
I mean, we're fully in support of the removal of the easement. I think that's part of this other plan, so that's probably the only thing that connects us.
Okay. So you'll just want to take the sign Mylar. Do you want to sign these after?
No.
Watch that ink, you know.
Yes.
You want it right now?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, do we- does the board want to get any more information on the 4 Ross Lane and the 43-41 High Road? Or are we okay with that as well? I mean, it's- It's had some explanation.
I think I have to justify being here. So as they were mentioning before, the- both plans are only connected basically by terminating this easement that went to the back area, but with respect to this particular plan, the whole idea was to add more square footage to Mr. Signore's property at 4 Ross Lane. And so what he wanted to do was reacquire the carriage house and to have enough land down here to put in a new septic system. So he went from, with this plan the way it is right now, he went from an original lot, a pre-existing non-conforming lot that had around 17,000 square feet, to now having over 40,000 square feet of area. And he had 92 feet of frontage originally. After adding this, you know, he adds another 26 feet of frontage. Unfortunately, even with the additional frontage, he still was under the 125-foot frontage amount, and he loses his non-conforming status by adding this lot to his non-conforming lot, even though he's making overall more conforming dimensional requirements. That required us to get a variance at the zoning board of appeals, which we did get. So we're only about six feet short of 125 feet of frontage. And, you know, as you know, for an A and R endorsement, you've got to find that there's sufficient frontage, and he's been getting access with 92 feet of frontage for many years, and so have his predecessors entitled. And by adding another 26 feet, plus the fact that he's got the zoning variance, I think he's actually going to get more access by virtue of having more frontage on that public way. And so just to go over the assemblage of lots, so this Lot A1 was borrowed from 41 High Road to create- now, I put in green the lot lines that are being abandoned. So 41 High Road used to be this. 41 High Road goes away. That merges now with 43. It becomes unbuildable, merges with 43, and that becomes one large compliant lot with plenty of lot area and more than enough frontage.
Oh, you're getting the frontage from here by this. This is giving you the frontage. You don't have it on Ross Lane tonight. You have it on High Road.
No, we have frontage on Ross Lane.
I thought you said Judy's. I'm sorry.
Ultimately, what happens is we create Lot A and Lot B.
Okay.
In order to get there, we take Lot A1 from what used to be 41 High Road. 41 High Road constitutes this now. When it's done, 41 High Road goes away, merges to become Lot B.
For the Farias.
Okay.
Correct.
Now, this line goes away, and you have the frontage from here to here from Ross Lane?
Yes, that's right.
And so who owned that? Let's call it a driveway when I'm looking. Who owned that? Was that owned by the Farias as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, it's a second access to 45.
It's a second access to 41. That's right. That's right. So this is Lot B1. Where are we? Lot A2, sorry, which is the carriage house lot. That's taken from 43 High Road. So with Lot A1 and Lot A2 combined to 4 Ross Lane, it all becomes Lot A. And he gets his lot with more- well, he's got compliant square footage now, and he's got closer to compliant frontage.
And he's already got your variance.
Right, that's right. And it's noted on the plan in the booking page. And so this lot goes away, merges with this, and this lot has more than sufficient frontage and far more area than it needs.
And your frontage there is what?
From here to here.
I'm sorry?
From there to there, which is, I don't know.
210.
More than 200 square feet.
Okay, no. Oh, okay, that's a tie. I'm sorry. I'm looking at Ross Lane. Okay, pardon me. You've just tied off that corner.
Yep.
So is your house the brick house or the mansard roof?
The mansard roof.
So the brick is to your west?
That's correct.
Okay.
So when all is said and done, the remaining lots both have sufficient frontage on public ways.
I don't know if it's worth to elaborate on the cesspool new septic subject.
Well, that was the purpose for getting Lot A1, was to provide enough space back here. He currently has a pre-existing non-conforming cesspool, which is located off-site on 41 High Road. So-
So what do you do with it?
So he'll be able to get rid of that.
Yeah.
He'll be able to get rid of that and install a new septic system on his own land.
You had an easement for that?
I did, yeah.
That's right.
But I'm thrilled to eliminate.
Yes, I would be sure.
Second only to my wife's excitement.
The environment thanks you as well.
Yes.
Are you doing any additions to this house?
No, I had, yeah, I had a new kitchen put on that spent much of last year, but that works complete.
So you're not adding any bedrooms or-
Nope.
Okay.
And I made that commitment at the zoning board meeting.
Okay. Okay.
Questions?
Any more questions? Have a motion?
Yep. Move to approve.
Second.
Any further questions or any comments?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You're done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Martha, especially to you. Thanks for your patience.
It's just amazing locks on Ross Lane. I don't know who's the original owner of that. The locks on Ross Lane are a mess. Anyway. No, they were both- the other one was small.
Are there was three of them? I'll just do the-
Yeah, just do the Mylar. We can do the others later.
They take that, no?
Yes.
I didn't date the other. Oh. I don't do that either. I never do that. I just- Just sign it. They have all their- Okay, our next item of business is decisions regarding the special permit and site plan approval for the conversion of the Methodist Church into four townhouse condominium units for Chris Horan, Belmoral Development LLC. So we have been sent the draft decisions, and I'm just curious if anyone has any comments on any one of these decisions. Let's take the special permit first.
On page two of the special permit, Martha, just a small edit of Minnesota on the three, A3, second line, it's prepared with a capital P, changed up to a lowercase p because that's the way it appears throughout the rest of the document.
Okay.
Oh, I see. Yep.
And then the blank dated five. Is that going to be taken care of tonight?
Yes, I actually have that already. I've put that in. That was March 15th.
And so on the landscape plan, should that be revised to or revised on?
Language that I've gotten from town council has been revised to.
Really?
Yeah.
To the date?
To the date.
To the date, okay, okay. I think those are the only questions I had.
In my print, I don't know whether, maybe in email, but the final print for you is probably correct. On the last page, it says the- this is the blank page. The signature's on the next page.
Mine didn't go that way, so I had-
You have it correctly.
Yeah.
Okay. Mine didn't print out that way.
Mine printed on the second page, too.
Yeah, I got it. I think this is correct. Okay, so any comments from board members on the special permit decision? No?
No.
Then can I have- and can I have a motion?
One quick question.
Yes.
On landscaping C1, what do we end up with the final decision on that? As far as, is there going to be trees down to the bottom, or is there going to be grass down to the bottom?
That is a condition of the site plan review, which, when we get to that, we can see how that's been handled. But it's not a condition of this, of the special permit. Special permit is broader.
Yep.
Site plan review is much more specific because the criteria we have is more specific.
The special permit is really just for the use.
It's for the use. And so the details that we all talked about are all handled in the site plan review. Okay, then can I have a motion?
I move to approve the special permit application or decision for Belmoral Development LLC covering premises of 11 Central Street, Byfield.
And may I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion of this issue? All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Now, for the site plan review, any comments at all on the draft document that you have before you or that you've read before?
Martha, same comment at the bottom of page two.
Right.
It says C3, second line.
Yep.
So in this, Peter, if we go to page four, or no, five of six. Item D, "The applicant shall meet with town officials to develop an acceptable tree planting plan for the Lund Street right-of-way at the north end of the property." So we basically put it on Chris to meet with Martha and Tracy's representative to work that out.
Perfect.
Okay. And I think those are the other- the other things that we thought might be conditions, I think we've worked out because the parking is now acceptable.
Yeah, the Farias did have some further conversation, excuse me, with Steve Sawyer about that. As Pete had mentioned, a little concern about the angle of the fence there for that last spot that's closest to the central street.
Right.
And, you know, Steve said that he's left 26 feet of 26-foot aisle behind, and he feels that's enough maneuvering room for cars to-
So I, yeah, I looked at the plans. I think that you've done the best you can. Do you know what I mean? And-
I hate to lose that tree, but-
Yeah, I think that- I think we encouraged you to do- well, you weren't here that night, I don't think. I think that Steve was here, and we just encourage you to do that because we think it's going to be a safer situation because of that.
The safety trumps the-
I think it does. Yeah. Okay.
Appreciate it. I'm tired with the shutting off Central Street. It just takes it out of harm's way.
It just does.
And also, you know, secures the building against that traffic too more, so.
Good. Thanks, Chris. Okay, I have a motion.
Move to approve the planning board decision of site plan review for 11 Central Street, Byfield. Applicant Belmoral Development LLC, Chris Horan, manager.
May I have a second? And any-
Go ahead.
Any further discussion?
No, I was just going to say Pete actually doesn't vote on this. He was called for the special permit but not site plan review because this is just a simple majority.
So it's just the four of us?
Right.
Okay. Thank you very much. So any further discussion at all on this? No. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I think that's it from us, Chris.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
You're welcome.
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to it.
Yeah, I am too.
Good.
When do you get started?
I'd like to get started. We've got talks to say about starting some demo inside in April, so.
I mean, it's not-
I should have the structure done by early July.
He's the delay right here, guys.
What can I say? What can I say? Well, anyway, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm down on the side of the forerage. I'll have to wait until the second.
All right. Ongoing- Okay. Ongoing business decisions. Newbury Self-Storage, 2331. So we were having- we had a site visit planned for the day that it snowed. We've put that off, and now we need to come up with another date for the site visit at 2331 Sled Road or 131 Newbury Port Turnpike. So do you have- have you canvassed any members at all to see when people are available?
I haven't. I talked to- I talked to Bill. Wednesday afternoons are not very good for him, but otherwise he's pretty open.
Wednesday afternoons are not good for him?
Yep.
How do- why don't we start with you, John? When are you-
Sorry, I don't know what's happening. What's the question?
The site visit for Sled Road?
What, about it?
Reschedule dates.
Reschedule. When are you available next week?
It depends on which day, you know. Somebody tell me.
All right, let's propose-
Somebody tell me a day and I'll check.
Monday's a good day for-
Monday, I'm actually not going to be.
Well, then, that's a bad- that's a bad day.
Monday's not a good day.
I can do Tuesday, but in the morning. I can't do in the afternoon.
I've got some medical appointments. I may very well not be able to make it.
Okay. Okay. Tuesday morning?
11:30?
Oh, sure. If we start at, let's say, not-
We're talking Tuesday at 11:30.
No, no, no.
Oh.
Tuesday at, what, 9:30, 10 o'clock? 9:30? What are you available for?
I have to pick my dog up at the kennel, so.
Well, then, let's move. Wednesday's the 13th?
But no, I could- later, I mean, 10:30 would be fine, and you need to leave at 11:30.
All right.
Is an hour enough?
Well, it's enough. Yeah, it might be- it might run a little longer, but-
Yeah, let's do it.
Where do you need to be? Can you just need-
Back to Newbury Port, so.
Oh, okay.
Actually, 10 o'clock would be fine.
All right, why don't we say 10 o'clock, Tuesday, the 12th?
I can go for a look at the site anytime.
You can do it. Okay.
I would like to throw in a couple of thoughts as far as what the planning board decides relative to the issues there.
Okay.
Maybe this is not the appropriate place. Maybe I shouldn't.
Yeah, I think we don't know, because we haven't seen the site in so long. I think we all need to reacquaint ourselves.
Yeah, I'll have a look sometime.
Okay, okay. Update on- so we're all set on that, right?
Okay, yeah, I'll just confirm that with Bill if there's any issue. I'll let you know.
Update on the Caldwell Farm Trail. Well, Martha and I had, I think, a very productive meeting with the new HOA at Caldwell Farm, and we presented them- And we presented them with a new trail that was a bit different than what we had originally planned. And we indicated that we still wanted to move forward on the trail and that we, our next step would be to draw up a management agreement between the town and Caldwell Farm HOA. Because it's town meeting right now, attorney's really not available. So immediately after town meeting, we'll sit down with the attorneys and start to draft a, an agreement that we'll then send to the HOA at Caldwell Farm and start to get this thing moving. So I thought it was very productive and was very happy that they were willing to move forward. TW Excavating, George sent a note out this morning, and I agreed with him that we were a little bit concerned that the work that was done there seemed to be much less than what we had been promised over a year ago. And so I, Martha, were you able to take a look at the original plans and the, and the decision? Are they not in conformance, or have they done a minimal amount?
They've done some landscaping, minimal, have any issues?
Does that exclude going out back too for the landscaping?
Well, they were supposed to do landscaping in the rear of the property. So, here's the entrance, and there's no, none of this is being done. So...
Oh, see, then, this, what is this? Proposed question, they don't show anything in the rear of the property.
I thought that that's what we had talked, I pulled out, I made copies of the decision.
We had two, site plan review and a special permit.
So were you able to look at this?
So on, so just looking at the landscape plan, certainly haven't done any of this landscaping. They did three or four things, maybe two or three things here, two or three things here, and put a new, a new sign in, and that's what they said existing signs could be replaced, and they did do that. But I don't see any of this landscaping that's proposed here.
Well, we were actually supposed to get a final...
A final, and we didn't get it?
And it never really came. I contacted them at one point and heard nothing back.
I think the revision was to reduce some of these along the front.
And put them together.
Clust of them together.
Clust of them together.
Around the fence, and the, you wouldn't put them there anyway because of the fragmities, which is a weedy decoration.
So...
But there was also plantings to be put in along the rear to protect the neighborhood, and I have no idea if they've been put in.
All right, here's, here's our, and conditions of approval. The applicant shall submit a landscape plan showing improvements to be made at the entrance to the site of Route 1 and the locations and types of trees to be planted on the site to screen operations on the site from the view of a butters. So, we never got any of that?
No.
Okay, so I think that we need to send them a letter, kind of saying that they're, what's the date of this, is when?
November 6th, 2014.
Now, they have until November 6th, 2016 to do this. But I think that we should, there's no sign that they're doing anything. So why don't we send them a letter, basically indicating that we never received this landscape plan? It probably should be sent certified if they didn't respond to your email. Did you email them, is that what happened?
They emailed them, yeah.
Okay.
Now, there are some trailers over here on the left of the entry, which I thought they were going to be removed, Martha.
They, well, they were going to use the...
Trailers in the right is office.
Yeah, they were going to use these.
Those as office? Are there?
They were going to put some flatbeds and other equipment over here.
Looked like, well, not trailers, but so much as the container boxes, big ones.
Are they really, because the one Pritchard had there are gone.
There's a fence that goes across here.
I have to go out and take a look.
There's two or three right there.
Okay, because they did call out some back here, those containers, but nothing...
Yeah.
They did, they did say that they would have some containers in the rear over there, that's right. Well, why don't, if the board is okay with this, I'll work with Martha on a letter that we'll then send out to all of you for your review.
Go ahead.
Okay? And I think that's about all we should be doing right now, right? Is that okay with everybody? Okay. George, I'm glad you, I'm glad you pointed that out.
I drive by it every day.
Well, I know, I, I do, I don't do it every day, but it's...
I feel sorry for the shrubs.
I do too, they're lonesome. Okay, then, new business, we have none?
Actually, I have one, one report to add. I had a meeting this afternoon with, with Ben Osgood, the engineer who's been working with Arthur Kostonis on the 105 High Road. And he is working with a developer who wants to do a 40B off of Pearson Drive. And Sam Doug and I met with them, they're looking at doing a 24-unit essentially subdivision there. The houses would be roughly 2,300 square feet. 25% of them, or six units, would be affordable. The affordable range would be about 180,000 to 200,000. Market price would be about 450 to 460. So they're just beginning the process, this was kind of their notification to us that it's, it's starting. The person who is representing them is a guy named Jeff Engler, who, according to Paul Haverdy, is a very well-known 40B consultant. So I'll be talking to Tracy about this and see if we can...
Just curious, why are they choosing 40B at this time instead of just having a discussion with us to see if we'd be willing to do a, what is that, about a 20% affordability restriction on a normal project?
I'm not sure why they're going this route. It's, it's a parcel that the owner has been trying to develop for a while under our, kind of our current subdivision rules and regs, and there are some issues with that. So I'm not quite sure why they're going this route.
So when, so are they proposing like 40,000 square foot lots?
No, no, so they're going to be maybe a little bit similar in scale to Colby Village, but it's all going to be one lot with 24 units and a 750-foot-long cul-de-sac. Actually, 800 and...
So it'll be a homeowners association?
So it would be a homeowners association.
How many, how many dwelling units total?
They're looking at 24.
Detached, 24 detached.
Detached, single-family. So in many ways, it actually looks like a standard subdivision. I mean, it could be something that could be...
Which they couldn't do under our current, I mean, those lots, they can't do those lots.
They'd have to do it as an OSRD.
OSRD.
Right, right.
Which we'd be happy to talk to them about. I'm just curious why they, did they assume that they would have a difficult time?
I'm not sure if they assumed that because of previous conversations that the landowner had had, or...
Anyway, it's not cast. I mean, I'd, I'd be happy to have a conversation with them and see, get an understanding of what they're, whether or not they could just go and do a normal OSRD and that we could condition six of the units to be affordable.
We think the sooner the better.
Yeah, because they, right.
Whenever they get their own thoughts together, come in and share with us so we can start the dialogue going. Best for everybody.
Right. You know, I can, I can ask that question. I think that if they were going to go the OSRD route, it looks like they're not, they may not have enough upland to leave as open space to go that route.
Yeah, it does get a bit wet back there.
It does get wet.
Yeah, it does.
They're not far away from serious wetlands.
Yeah, yeah. So maybe that's the constraint. But it'd be interesting to find out.
Yeah, I can ask that question.
Okay, so again, Ben Osgood is the engineer.
The engineer.
Who's the developer?
The developer is a fellow named Kevin Goodwin. No, I don't, I don't know him.
Kevin Goodwin.
I think it's Goodwin.
You know that name?
55, actually, calling it 55R. I don't remember.
He's an out-of-town resident.
I think, yeah.
So it's 55 Pearson Drive, so that's right at the end of Pearson Drive.
Right, and they're actually, they're calling it 55R, although we only have 55 in our assessor's database.
So they'd be going through an existing subdivision?
Yes.
Or road, it's kind of like a subdivision.
Yeah, and that was one of the issues, that they're coming off with a cul-de-sac at the end of a non-through road.
It's, 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 it's conceptually like the project that was done in Newburyport. Where they, woods, Oleo Woods?
Yes.
Where they went through an existing neighborhood that had been dead-ended, and they put a new road in.
Yeah.
And they put those...
Russell Terrace, they extended Russell Terrace.
Russell Terrace, that's right. So it's a similar...
It's similar, although I think Oleo Woods kind of loops around, it's not a cul-de-sac.
It, it, it loops, it's not a cul-de-sac.
It came out rather nice, a nice, nice-looking subdivision.
It's a, it's a very nice subdivision. And it, anyway, I've got some, some folks who know some folks who live there and they love it. Anyway, but that was the Green Company that did that.
Right.
So it'd be nice to find out a little more about this, Martha. So I guess, what was, what did you tell them, your next step, was you going to let us know about it? And then what are they, what are they supposed to do?
Well, their next step really is to get the paperwork together that they need to submit to Mass Housing to start the process, and then Mass Housing reviews that, and when that's done, gets submitted to us, well, to the town. It's all in the ZBA's hands, not ours.
It's not ours at all?
Except as review and comment.
Well, it's, it would be our first 40B.
Right, right.
What role do a butters have in a 40B?
You know, I'm not sure. I need to find out a lot more about it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from board members on that?
And there would, there would be, I think 70% of the affordable lots would be reserved for local preference.
Can they do that?
They can.
I don't think they could. I thought that HUD, you can affirmatively market them, but you can't reserve, I thought you couldn't reserve them.
I think that's, yeah, that's what he said today, because I, I asked.
Then how is, what's, how is local preference defined? Is it by community, I mean, certain towns with radius or something?
And the affordable units have to be affordable in perpetuity now. So I think they didn't used to have to be.
Not easy to do with, with for-sale units. Well, I guess the burden is put on, since we're not part of it, the burden's put on MHFA. And so they have to maintain the affordability. I think. Yeah, okay, good. All right, liaison reports, Board of Selectmen? Well, we were, we were at that meeting last week.
Yeah, you were at that meeting, so...
I mean, it was not much more, although, although there was another presentation by Eric on the municipal facilities building. And as usual, he did, as usual, he did a very thorough job. They're not going to make it to, but this is your committee, so I shouldn't say it.
Well, I think you all may... Yeah, so there's nothing, there's nothing on town anymore.
Nothing on the warrant. Is he going to make a presentation on status?
I think he will, I think he will. And the presentation that he gave that night has been refined a little bit, and that's going to be available for anybody to look at. I've got, I've got that now if anybody wants to see it.
I guess a question we have is before us, is, are we going to make any kind of a presentation on the master plan at town meeting? It's only three weeks away.
Right, I think that it would be good, especially if we're going to make some sort of an announcement about the survey. We had a meeting last, we had a meeting last week of the public engagements, working group of the master plan. And Pete and Elizabeth were both there, and John. So we are going to be issuing a survey to residents, and that's going to be rolled out essentially at town meeting.
So when do we need to put this on the war, on the, on the town meeting agenda?
I think, I can talk to Tracy about that, but there's usually something in the beginning for board and committee reports.
Okay, because we still don't have the survey. And I don't know if I know, we want to announce it if we don't have the survey.
I got a draft from Alberta today.
Oh, you did? Oh, good.
She said it's a little...
So that, that's positive then?
Yeah, we need to look at it, though. She said it's a little lengthy.
How does this connect with town meeting?
We're, we're, we'd like to make some sort of a, an update, a progress report on the master plan at town meeting.
Report to town meeting.
To town meeting.
And you want the input from the survey?
Well, we want to be, we want to be able to announce to people that the survey is, is out there and encourage them to participate.
Oh, okay, because it won't be expected back before town meeting?
No, no.
Nope, nope.
Just want to use that as a forum to...
Right.
...run a little on stage.
Right. So, all right.
I think the plan is that, I think the plan is that we release the survey as of the date of the meeting.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Right.
So the survey would go live on the 26th.
They have to access it online.
Oh, oh, I see, I get it.
And there may be hard copies available, but that's not the primary tool. It's going to be an online survey because the, the consultants say that they get a 20% to 25% return on online, and maybe a 5% return with hard copy, so they think that that's where they should go. So that's good. Yeah, right. MVPC, yeah, MVPC meets in two weeks, so we, I don't have anything further to report on that. Concom, anything new?
We have a message from our planning board meeting.
ZBA?
At the last meeting, the ZBA issued a special permit for the conversion of a first floor of a garage at 13 Farmland Drive to a single detached apartment, accessory apartment. Converting the garage, it was also permitting a small area on the second floor for the owner's office.
What's the address? I want to drive by and take a look. That's exactly what we had in mind.
13 Farmland Drive.
That's not, and they, and they approved it?
Yeah, it's, instead of a garage, it's now called a cottage.
All right, I think... Yeah, it's, it's detached. And I think, and I think it would be worth having a discussion now that, now that there are a couple of these. They have another one before them, which the, the original house was actually below our minimum, 1,600 square feet. I think it was 15 something. And so in order to make the house big enough to allow for a detached accessory apartment, they're actually adding a barn and a breezeway and living area on the second floor of the barn.
Well, that, that's all right, that's okay.
So, you know, I, I think it would be interesting to look at these and see if they're actually sort of meet the intentions of the board. So when we have our meeting with the ZBA, our joint meeting, which I still need to send out something to get dates, I think we should talk about that.
So the, the ZBA wants to meet, do they have a, a bunch of issues, or what?
They, yeah, they had, they were the ones that Sam had mentioned a while back, and there are probably some others. I know that, that Eric wants to talk about Plum Island.
Okay.
Speaking of surveys, I've got a question for anybody, everybody. Did anybody get a survey that came from the Sandy Grant crowd? No, nobody got it, you did, you got one.
Through the schools.
Nobody else got one?
She got it through the schools.
Through the school department?
Yeah, I asked Brian.
Okay, that's from you.
Yeah, that was from me.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I'm a little puzzled why we're doing it at this time, because I would expect 99% of the population don't know we're doing this, what we're doing. But, I mean, that has to come eventually, but it hasn't, there's been no particular public relations effort at this point.
No, you wouldn't, you wouldn't know, you wouldn't know about it.
Do you know the content of the survey, do you know the content of the survey there, John? It was really very basic, had, were you aware of...
Basically, I knew where. But my, my, my own personal guess would be most people are not aware that the town is involved in any, any planning for such eventualities.
Right, that's my guess.
The survey is probably conditioned, is a condition of the grant.
It's the beginning, I, I, oh, I'm sure it is, I'm sure it's a requirement. They like those sort of things. So I don't think that's something that the Swiss River dreamed up. No, I think it's a requirement, and I agree with you.
Okay. All right, anything else for the good of the order? Anybody else have anything else they'd like to chat about? Or not chat? Okay. Do you, the- How are you? Okay. Well, it's riveting.
Exactly the word I was looking for.
Okay, I'd like a motion to disband.
Second.
All those in favor?